I'd like to call, open the meeting. Agenda review, attachment approval.
This is the work session?
The work session, yeah, I know. I'd like to, real quick, I'd like to discuss what we discussed in closed session. It was a personnel matter. It was in consideration of Richard Childers interim role as the Fire Chief of Sunset Beach for, as long as Mr. Childers continues in that role, an interim Fire Chief for the town, I'm making Mr. Childers to receive a 10 percent based salary increase. Based, until such time as a new Fire Chief is hired, in which point, Mr. Childers would, salary shall fall back to his original salary as Assistant Fire Chief.
Can we vote on that now or do we have to wait till the meeting?
You can do it now.
I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's gonna sing and dance?
The council discussions, we do this as...
Do the agenda first.
Agenda. Agenda review. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Jan?
Mister Mayor, I would like to remove H. 4 from the agenda.
Are you all in agreement?
Yes. Any discussion?
Just, just to let everybody know, one of the things that happened is Councilperson Harris and myself agreed that we would go over the guidelines, review those together, and circumstances the past couple of weeks have prevented that from happening, so we will postpone until the next meeting when we have a chance to talk about this, and we'll bring a draft together to the council.
Well, the next meeting, I think, is...
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Does it give enough time, John?
Is that sufficient time?
It is for me, is it?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, well, we'll give it a try, and if we can't, we'll come up with another excuse.
Right. Do we need a second?
Mister Mayor, I would like to add to the agenda under old business. I guess this would be item four, since you canceled item four.
All right.
Discussion and potential decision regarding Jinx Creek.
Any other matters regarding the agenda? Carly?
No.
John?
No.
Jan?
No.
Rich?
No.
That's it? That's it. Any other council discussions?
I've, I've got a couple items if nobody...
Go ahead, John.
Nobody else has any. First off, just remind everybody that the town will be hosting a Memorial Day ceremony supported by the Committee to Honor American Veterans on May 28th, Memorial Day at 10:00 a.m. out in the park. Everybody is welcome to come up and show, show up there for that. A second one, this past week, on the beach, the Kaplins opened up their Sunset Beach pier to allow the Calabash Elks Lodge Veterans Affairs Committee to host a number of almost thirty, thirty-five veterans and their support staff from the Fayetteville, North Carolina Veterans Assisted Living Home, the Summit Place Home in Little River, and Autumn Care in Shalote for a morning of fishing out there on the pier. It's a great event to recognize and help take care of some of our elderly veterans. One of the veterans will be ninety-nine years old in the beginning of June, and he made a commitment to let one of our Veteran Affairs Committee people assist him in a skydive on his hundredth birthday, so, so, stand by next year for you, news. I have a report from the GSAT meeting. This is Grand Strand Transportation Committee that we are part of. They have a direct appropriation fund that the, the local GSAT committee controls that has $1.6 million available for projects. It could be improving an intersection, coming up with transportation alternatives such as bike lanes or paths, or doing studies to help, help other programs. They've developed a ranking criteria that has been published, and the town has it available. Each of the jurisdictions in this area may apply for one project, and it has to have a 20 percent match. The dates for the submission of the applications, the GSAT is going to put out dates for submission of applications sometime in May, and it's gonna be a short turnaround time. So, the town needs to think about and prepare, do we have a project to submit? You know, think about something like improving the intersection at 904 in Georgetown, which, that traffic light and those turns are somewhat hazardous and in bad condition. And that's the end of that report.
To relieve, to relieve, John, I have applied for the GSAT position. I have filled out the application, and I have gone through a clearance process to ensure that I do not have a conflict of interest, and I was approved, and I'm waiting for the next meeting.
Do we need to put that on agenda for approval for the coun, town council?
We already approved it, we already appointed.
We already did.
Yeah.
You already appointed me, you can take it back anytime you want.
So, you need to come up with a plan for the project, real quick, please. Come up with a project, real quick.
You know me, I don't like to spend money if you don't have to.
Any other discussion? Charlie? Okay. Jan?
Yep.
At this time, I'd like to stand up and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, does any member of the council have a conflict of interest of appearance of conflict of interest in regards to any item on the agenda? If so, please state it now, at this time.
I would like to make a statement.
Go ahead.
Okay. I do not have a conflict of interest, and I just want to remind many of the citizens who are here, who don't normally come to these meetings, that the question of whether because I live on the canal constitutes a conflict of interest. Our town legal advisor has reviewed that twice and reported that on June 2016 at a meeting, and April 2017, that council member at that time, Carol Scott, and myself, did not have a conflict of interest concerning dredging. So, we can talk about dredging, we can give our opinions, and we can make, take part in doing the voting. So, I just wanted to get that out there and on the record at the beginning of this topic, 'cause that may come up again today. Thank you.
Anything else? Now it's time for public hearing, anybody have a question? Lisa? Call for a motion to open...
Mister Mayor would like to file a motion to open the public meeting regarding off-street parking.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
It's open.
It's open? Okay. Now I call public. Anybody have a question on it?
Eddie Walters, Main Street, Sunset Beach. I would ask that council direct the planning board to study the parking on the island a little bit more thoroughly. The 10 percent reduction, I think, is a step in the right direction, but I think the town and the planning board have a difficult time distinguishing how different the island life is compared to the mainland, and trying to do a one-size-fits-all approach for the businesses on MB versus BB district just doesn't work, it falls short. I went in a shop today next door, for example, there were nine patrons, appeared to be three different groups, one store worker, there was one car in the parking lot, and that was the store owner. All the other patrons there walked, and if you go on the island and you look in any shop in the evening, you'll see that they're lined up, and there are probably twenty bicycles out there, at least, and maybe two cars. So, to reduce the parking by 10 percent on the island, and doing the same on the mainland, like I said, that's a step in the right direction, but we have a very pedestrian-oriented population over there, unlike the mainland, and to require the same amount of parking doesn't recognize that fact, that the vast majority of folks walk or bicycle to all the activities, the restaurants or shops on the island. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie.
Any more comments? I'd like to make a motion to close this public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next on agenda is presentation of Sunset Concert Series, Fred Thorn.
I'd like to remind the council that this was a request about counsel for him to...
Right.
Make a request for the monies for the concert series into the budget. So, if you have any questions...
Okay, and my question is, Fred, you know, why have you done in the last couple of months since we spoke last, as far as trying to get more funds into the, to help pay for the concert series?
We visited just about every business in town, and also outside of town. We do have sufficient funds to have fifteen concerts this year.
Does that include the $10,000 that we gave?
That includes the $10,000 at the town.
Okay.
Without that $10,000, you would not have fifteen concerts.
Now, Fred, when's it start and when's it end, at this time?
Begins on May 30th. It ends, it's scheduled to end on September 5th. However, if we have a weather postponement, it will go into September. We never cancel a Sunset Beach concert, we always reschedule into, into September.
I'm sorry, if, if the town didn't subsidize this event with the $10,000, how many concerts would have to be terminated?
Well, you get into a lot of other things, just other than the number of bands. We have a concert stage, we have portageons, we have a whole bunch of things.
No, I understand, but what's, if you have fifteen events now, and if the town didn't fund the $10,000, how many events would that cancel?
Um, six or seven.
Fred, are you also gonna be in the same location?
No, we've had to move location because of expense, so we will be moving from the Village Park to the Village at Sunset Beach, which is across from First Citizens Bank.
Are we gonna get a temporary stage to help?
Yes, we do.
So, you have a stage?
That's not appropriate.
That's fine, John. So, you say you've got, you're buying one, or you're gonna lease one?
We have made arrangements with a professional stage company to deliver a stage. It will stay here all summer, and we've negotiated a very attractive rate from his normal weekend rate.
John, so, I've been told about you are getting, trying to get food trucks here for this, the concert series?
We have several vendors that have been at the concerts every year. I did reach out to every restaurant in town, and not one of them wanted to be a sponsor at any level of the concerts, and we expect to attract quite, quite an audience this year. Because of our venue, we have nine bands that are not appearing anywhere else in Brunswick County. We have ten bands that have never appeared before in Brunswick County. And in my wanderings around town and around the county over the last several months, everybody is very excited, so, about what's coming this year in the Sunset Beach concerts. Lot of people do depend on, or book their vacations around the concerts, believe it or not. Back in January, we started getting calls, what band is playing on such and such a week? We're trying to book our summer venues, so, we do plan to have food available at the concerts.
And where are the trucks, I'm sorry, where are the trucks gonna be parked?
They are, the entire concert is on private property.
Is it not true that you have vendors, other than food vendors, at these concerts that will be selling their wares?
Could you explain that to me?
Yes, I saw, I saw an ad for Island Breeze that said that they, they would have a tent at the Sunset Beach concerts.
That is correct. And, and... That is correct.
Right. And they, and they gave you a fee, which they can deduct from their taxes, and they will be able to sell their wares.
Island Breeze is one of our major sponsors. We have forty-two major sponsors this year. These are the folks that stepped up and realized the benefit to their business to support the Sunset Beach concerts.
But you will have other businesses selling wares there, other than food?
Only if they are a sponsor at a certain level.
But they will be there.
I hope they'll be there. They paid a fee to be there. They're the ones that brought us the Sunset Beach Summer Concerts this year.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
We're not the only ones around here who do concerts, you know, Calabash, OIB, Shalote.
There are eight.
Do you have a sense of how those concerts get funded?
Yes, I do. Very good sense.
Could you share that with us?
Yes. Most of the towns, well, let's step back. We are the only concert of the eight that are around the county that are run by four volunteers. I've done this for seven years. Wilson Cheryl's been with me for six, and we have two new concert community persons that have joined us this year because two of our volunteers retired last year. Last year, I'm getting old, I'm getting tired. This is something that I do, and Wilson does, to give back to the community. I have a real estate business I run in town, okay? I can't tell you how many hours it takes to put a concert series together. It does take away from my business, but for the love of music, for the love of giving back to the town, we do it. There are eight concert venues around Brunswick County. Most of those are funded at the same level that Sunset Beach funds their concerts, which is the grand patron level, which is $10,000. Some of the towns fund their concerts completely, which is more than $10,000. Some of the towns also have a TDA. Some of the towns don't need businesses to sponsor their concerts to raise the funds to do it. We need the funds from both the town and the local businesses to do it. Last year, the businesses didn't step up to the extent that it needed to be. That's why we had to do seven concerts. The businesses this year realize the benefit of having concerts for the tourists, for the public, and that's why they stepped up this year.
Fred, what's the cost of this fifteenth concert, $25,000 roughly?
Closer to $35,000. Runs between 30 and 35,000, because it's not just the bands. It's insurance, it's portageons, and it's everything else involved. That does not count, and I know town council thinks I'm making a fortune off of this thing, I don't make a penny off of this. No one, we are volunteers. We are a 501(c)(4) nonprofit organization, so we don't, no matter what you think or hear, we are volunteers. There's no money for us in it.
Well, there's, there's some of us that think that the concert series is a great marketing device for the town, that it is an appropriate use, accommodation tax to, to either fund or help fund. I proposed earlier in the year to fund the whole $25,000, that didn't go very far.
No, it didn't, unfortunately, and that's...
But there are differences of opinions in terms of using, well, the accommodation tax comes from our vendors who come into town, so it's actually not coming from our property taxes and that, that goes into it, but it enables us to use those taxes for other things.
And that is what occupancy taxes are to be used for.
I, I agree with you on that, and the point, the point being, that I wanted one to establish clearly, there's a precedent that other towns in this county put public funds forward to help pay for their concerts, so we're unique in that.
Correct.
And it's a precedent, so, it's good marketing, there's precedent for doing it, it's covered by our accommodation taxes, and it's great entertainment for the, for all of us who live here and go to the concerts, I think. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
And there seems to be a misconception about the occupancy tax. The occupancy tax is taxpayer money. Doesn't matter where it's funded from, because if the occupancy tax is not used, it goes back to the fund balance in the town's reserves. So, because it is funded from the occupancy tax, doesn't mean that it's free. The other question that I have is...
I, okay, let's, let's hear you out, sir.
Yes. I wanna be a vendor. I wanna be a sponsor. I wanna sell my hats. How much do I have to pay?
To have, to do that, you need to be a gold sponsor.
All right. What does it take for, so, everybody who's selling food is a gold sponsor?
Correct.
How much will it cost me to be a gold sponsor?
$1,000. It's the same level across the board at the Brunswick County Park and Rec. We maintain the same guidelines across the county.
I'm trying to find out.
Yeah. You're given an opportunity to be a sponsor, but, you know...
Fred, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Parking, are you gonna, Reggie?
He asked me a question mark.
Go ahead.
Okay.
I would like to answer it.
Okay.
The business association in this town has been destroyed, and they are angry.
Why?
Because we no longer have an active business association, it's beginning to be reestablished, and you know all the reasons why the merchant association somehow dissolved.
I've been on the board of the merchants association since day one. I know what happened.
All right, thank you, and I'm, I don't wanna get into a discussion about it.
No, we better not.
Yes, thank you. That's why, they're angry, because the money that...
They're not angry.
The money that they raised at the farmer's market, I believe, helped to make contributions to the concert series.
They were a sponsor, as the town is.
Thank you very much.
Fred, I have a question about parking.
Yes.
Where are you gonna be parking the cars, or you're gonna use the parking spaces?
Same places they've been parking for the last six years, sir.
Okay. I'm just asking, Fred, you're not getting nasty.
No, I'm not getting nasty, I'm just answering the question.
Are you gonna, are you gonna have people not parking in behind Food Lion, or that's open space to everybody?
We are going to attempt not to have people park, but we got four volunteers. What are we gonna do?
I mean, can we do something as far as marking that off, so this parking only for the merchants at work, or have a...
The concerts are from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m.
And it's, it's private property. There's nothing that we could do about that.
Okay.
Well, when you say private property, what do you mean? The parking area is private property?
Yeah, it's not owned by the town.
It's not owned by the town?
No, it's private property, it's not public property.
So, people who come into the concert series can, can park in private property?
Well, it's my understanding it's designated as a parking lot, or for overflow parking where they're gonna be setting up, but since they're using that space, I don't see why they can't coordinate off, but the town couldn't. Not unless we were invited to do so as part of the project and had permission from the property owner to do so.
Well, there are restaurants along behind Food Lion, and where do those customers park? And where do those customers park?
The paved parking lot, I suppose, where they usually park.
There's no paved parking.
Say that again?
Behind, there's paved parking also in the entire area.
That's paved, not paved.
All right, I get it.
Paved or paid?
Paved.
Paved. That was a little loud.
Well, any more discussion? Fred, thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
I thank you, the council, and I look forward to your support for the 2019 Summer Concert Series. I hope you approve our request and do it tonight. Thank you.
Fred, real quick, have you gotten your $10,000 from Lister? Has that been allocated yet, Lisa? It has been?
We have the check.
Okay.
Yep, it's in the bank.
Have a good day.
I look forward to putting next year's check in the bank as soon as possible.
Thank you, Fred.
Second, Shoreline Management Pre-Dredging, Robert.
Good evening, council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here, and just wanna update everyone on the, the progress that we made through the, through the third agency coordination meeting we've had on this project, and, and a couple of even, a little bit of progress since then, if I can make sure this works. I have nine slides, and I believe I've been asked, Karen, if I'm correct, to hold questions to the end.
Lower lights.
So, I hope you all have copies in front of you, but like I said, it's just nine slides, so I'm trying briefly to be quick, I think most, if not all, the council members were at the meetings, but I guess there's some, some action items that we just wanna cover and, and make sure that the town's in agreement with. All right, so, main part of the discussion's really in two parts, look at the results of the third agency, the discussions that we had at that agency coordination meeting, which are listed here, but the, the main one is the confirmation of that compliance measures necessary for the North Carolina Administrative Code, and then a couple other items, as well as the recommended next steps that can bring us to construction on this There's a reference map just showing the areas that we'll be talking about tonight. This project is, is for the maintenance areas of the feeder canal in Bay Area. We see north Jinx Creek, which was a main topic of the agency coordination meeting, as well as the feeder canals, with the finger canals. Every time I mention feeder canal, I wanted to clarify that I am including by reference there the finger canals as well, so that is one project, those included, and then the Bay Area, there a little bit to the, to the, lower toward Tubbs Inlet. But, so, understanding that reference, and, and the main point of that agency coordination meeting was looking at the compliance measures necessary for that North Carolina Administrative Code. That code requires that we, any dredging in the finger canals or feeder canal to establish a deep water connection or a connection at least as deep as the proposed dredge cut. The dredging in the feeder canal would maintain what we did, what the town did in 2001, 2002, which is about minus five plus one, so minus six would be the maximum dredge depth there. The current depths of Jinx Creek, and I'm gonna flash forward here a little bit just to show a, a bathymetry map of Jinx Creek, the controlling depth of Jinx Creek is minus two, so we would, under the North Carolina Administrative Code, we would have to dredge all either through north Jinx Creek or through Tubbs Inlet. We would, to establish a deep water connection or a connection at least as deep as what we're proposing to dredge as the feeder canal. And so, the agencies are requiring us to do that, however, both, all the agencies, I'm gonna flip back here as we show that, that bathymetry map, flip back one slide if I can, and just point out that although compliance with that administrative code is being required, the agencies also favor and support a variance request by the town through the CRC, so in other words, we could waive that requirement. The agencies cannot waive it, but the Coastal Resource Commission can waive it, and so that is, is our, as we'll get to where we see this project going, understanding the, the resources that we potentially could impact, is we expect we'll be asking for a variance from the Coastal Resource Council to eliminate or not require us to establish that deep water connection through either north Jinx Creek or Tubbs Inlet. So, and we'll talk about that in a minute, but the compliance... So, and we'll talk about that in a minute, but the compliance, in order to comply with that administrative code, we will, we would have to dredge either through North Jinks Creek or Tubbs Inlet because of the controlling depths in those areas. And again, looking at the bathymetry here, just scooting through that, coming up on one more. So another item that we discussed at the agency's coordination meeting was the Jinks Creek shellfish survey, and this goes back into establishing the resources that are there. Using the, the protocol established by the Division of Marine Fisheries for their shellfish survey, identified approximately 1,200 shellfish per acre in Jinks Creek. Most of these were in the, there's about 42 acres, 44 acres in the survey area, excuse me, 44 acres total surveyed, and we identified approximately 1,200 shellfish per acre in our dredge area, so that, doing the math, and, and we didn't get too much into this, but we figured, we calculated using their protocol, that it's approximately 13,000 shellfish that could be impacted by this dredge project in Jinks Creek. And that is the worst-case scenario, but based on the, on the protocol and the survey techniques, and accepted measures by the state, we found that approximately 13,000 shellfish per acre, about 13,000 shellfish could be impacted with this project if, if it were to go through the Jinks Creek as originally proposed. But that, that, the survey results were accepted by the state without comment, so we're happy with that. So that, that task is, can be deemed complete, and that report can be deemed final. So the last part of the agency coordination meeting, and really kind of circles back to the, to that compliance measure, and there we go. We discussed a permitting strategy with the agencies, and everyone recognized that, now I'll say, I will say, everyone recognized the potential impacts of dredging North Jinks Creek, and they understood, and actually they were clear on that compliance with the administrative code would require that dredging, however, they understood and supported that variance request that we eliminate the North Jinks Creek from our proposed project. So on one hand, they are requiring us to dredge it to be compliant, but on the second, they are saying they support us if we don't, and ask for a variance from the Coastal Resource Council. So they cannot, the state agencies cannot provide that variance, but they support us going to the CRC to request that variance. If we do that, this would be the area that we are, this would be the, what we're calling the maintenance areas in this, in this footprint, in this footprint. This would be the beach compatible material in South Jinks Creek, along with a feeder canal in Bay Area. So the, this would essentially establish that navigation access in and around the docks, so that we could get out to, to North Jinks Creek. It would not complete the route to the intercoastal waterway, but at least would alleviate that, the shoaling problems in and around the docks of the feeder canal, the Bay Area, and then South Jinks Creek. So this is the area that we originally talked about submitting the permit application for back in last June. Since that time, the agency has gone back and forth. We originally talked about providing one permit application for this area, the agency came back and said they wanted two, and then we clarified, we actually got different, different direction in February, saying they wanted one again, and now we have confirmed the path that the agencies want to see as far as the permit application. So there's been a lot of round, turning around and chasing our tail, I'll say, trying to figure out exactly what the agencies want. And so the best clarification we have from that meeting is that they have to require us to dredge North Jinks Creek, but they support us trying to avoid dredging North Jinks Creek. And so that, that was the best way I know how to explain it, and, and we support and recommend following that path. I will say that all agencies there supported that variance request, I need to clarify this, that Division of Water Resources was not in the room. Chad Coburn, the representative from Division of Water Resources, had left the room before this discussion took place, and he, further conversation with him, he supports the variance request, but he cannot, and the Division of Water Resources, DWR, cannot guarantee that they will, that he supports not impacting North Jinks Creek, I should say that. The DWR supports not dredging North Jinks Creeks, but they could not, at the time, guarantee support for the variance request because the potential water quality issues. So with that, we are not guaranteed that the variance request will be accepted, plus the CRC may have some other issue come up, but I would expect if the state agency supported that the CRC would support it. But we have one agency, DWR, that has stated on the phone calls and conversations, that they want to see in writing proof that our project will not create water quality issues. Now, our proof that we propose to provide that is simply we did it in 2002, we did it in 2010, it didn't create water quality issues then, why should it create water quality issues now? And so that is our proof, it's no additional cost, it's simply a couple of sentences in a paragraph and no additional modeling, and we think that that should do it. This project is a different scale than the 2002 and 2010 project, but at the same point, we feel that that will get us where we need to go, but I want, I need to mention that the variance is not a guaranteed measure, it's, it's a, one part we're, we're working towards and believe, are confident in that will be granted, but need to clarify that the Division of Water Resources has not necessarily provided that support for that variance request because of the potential water quality issues and the fact that we are digging a hole not connecting deep water. We're digging to minus six, the controlling depth is minus two, so that's four feet, and it's, could impact flushing, I don't believe it will, it didn't in 2002, it didn't in 2010, so I think we should, that proof should be satisfactory, I'm hopeful. So that was really the, a very quick summary, and a little bit confusing, I hope not confusing, but as we get to the recommended next steps, understanding that we will, understanding that we expect to submit for a variance request, we, we expect to, once we submit the permit, the next step, the immediate next step is to submit the permit application, that's the major step, major milestone we need to accomplish in order to, to, to see how this variance request works out. To get to that phase, to, to submit that permit, there is one main item that we need to rectify, that, that the town has control over, and that's what we're proposing tonight or recommending to the town for acceptance. We need to identify a, a call share, or negotiate a call share agreement with Ocean Isle Beach. That is the simplest way we can place the beach compatible material on Sunset Beach, we will need to define, define a purpose and need in order to do that, which would be additional cost as far as surveys and shoaling rates. If we place material on Ocean Isle Beach, it is, it should be a very simple process where we take their data, put it in our application, and move it forward. So we are recommending that we negotiate with Ocean Isle Beach, they have expressed an interest to do this. My recommendation is that we include any property in Ocean Isle Beach that receives sand. If, if, if sand is placed seaward of their property, that they are included in the assessment, similar to the properties on Sunset Beach. So if, they would pay the same share as what, what a, what the property is paying on Sunset Beach. The reason I am changing that from our original proposal where we were paying $10 a yard or whatever, they would pay the full cost of that placement, is the material volume has decreased substantially, where the benefit to Ocean Isle Beach for receiving the sand, the benefit to those properties is, is minimal, in my opinion, at this point. We're approaching approximately 30,000 yards, which would probably extend five or six properties. We're not at 60 cubic yards a foot, go about five or six properties, expecting they're about 100 feet wide or so. So it's, the benefit to those properties is, is minimal, in my opinion, that if we asked them to pay an, the $10 a yard or some, in my opinion, large amount, like anything greater than what Sunset Beach is playing, paying, the properties at Sunset Beach are paying, I believe they will simply walk away from it. And that would cost the town additional cost as far as identifying another site. However, if they pay the same as the properties at Sunset Beach, essentially considered as an equal in that project, then they seem to be on board with it in conversations. We would need to submit a formal request, we're prepared to do that, and attend their town council meeting, probably the first of next month, on the 12th, to get their formal decision on this, if the town council approves moving forward with that. But that is, is, is the main key, and, and one of the points that we want to walk away from tonight is receiving direction on that and make sure that everyone's in agreement. Second, once we have that information or have their agreement, we can move forward, submit the permit application. We, under the current schedule, we could accomplish that by late June. Then there is one item that, another item that has come up last week that actually impacts the Turtle and Mary's Creek project, as well as this project. And that is the Corps of Engineers has issued new guidance for their material placement islands. They are not allowing at this point any material from any non-federal projects, in other words, a town-sponsored project, they are not allowing material to go on a disposal island that they have a lease agreement for. We're currently working with the property owners, where as the Wilmington District, as well as headquarters in Washington, DC, to rectify that situation, because we don't see that that is amenable or, or really good relations, is whereas they are restricting, not only, they're restricting a lot of maintenance projects along the intercoastal waterway, as well as the private property owner from, from really utilizing his property. So we're, that is a statewide issue, if not a east coast issue, and it's gaining a lot of strain. I knew of it before this time, but I did not know that they were regulating privately-owned properties. I knew they were not allowing proper, material to be placed on islands owned by the Corps of Engineers, but this property is not owned by the Corps of Engineers, it's simply leased by the Corps, and they believe that because of their lease agreement, they can restrict non-federal use of it. In other words, they can restrict, if it's not maintenance dredging of the intercoastal waterway, no material can be placed on those islands. If that issue is not resolved, then we need to find another disposal placement, another, another place to put the material. We are confident, at least at this point, I'm confident, and as we go down that route, that it will change, that, that guidance will change, it's a matter of time. We are hopeful that we can change it very quickly and still reach, still reach construction by November this year. However, what this does, until, this is where the timing comes in, until the Corps changes their guidance, the agencies will not give a permit decision for the Jinks Creek, for the feeder canal and the maintenance areas, the feeder canal and the Bay Area. If they don't give a permit decision, then we cannot request the variance. In other words, the state has to issue the permit for the feeder canal and Bay Area and South Jinks Creek in order for us to request a variance from the CRC to eliminate North Jinks Creek. In order for them to issue the permit, the Corps of Engineers has to say we can use their disposal island, or we have to find another disposal island. So the steps are, submit the permit, rectify with the Corps where we're going to put the material placement, receive the permit, and then request the variance to eliminate North Jinks Creek. And, and, and so it's, it's still a convoluted process, but we still, we believe at this point, and hopeful, to meet, we need to have that permit in hand by the first of, first of August, so that we can request that variance to meet the September 19th CRC meeting. With those things, if those things come together, the September 19th CRC meeting's in New Hanover County, we can then expect construction beginning the fall of this, winter of this year. And, now that, that takes care of the immediate need, and one thing we want, another, this is, another question we have for council, is do we, will the dredging of South Jinks Creek and the feeder canal and Bay Area, in other words, if we do not establish that deep water connection of, of plus minus five plus one to either the Atlantic Ocean or the intercoastal waterway, does that satisfy the original goal of that navigation access to the residents? Does that meet the needs of the project? Is that satisfactory to, to stop at that point? Or do we look at a larger-scale project as far as establishing that navigation access through deep water, either the Atlantic Ocean or the intercoastal waterway? And so we're looking, if council would like, we would like to work with the council to, to, to ask that question to the residents, either a public meeting, or email correspondence, or in any way we can help out, to see if indeed that meets their needs. We, through this process, we have assumed a design vessel, basically a 30-foot Grady White, but we, that may be too large. If they, if we're, if the design intent, if a minus, if the governing depth of minus two in North Jinks Creek satisfies the need, then we don't need to move forward with anything greater than that. But we want to assure the council that they have met the needs of the residents in that fashion, and that's why we're, we're bringing that up. This project does not connect, does not make that connection to open water, and we would like to help the council address it if need be, address and see if additional work is necessary to accomplish that task. But, and, and that is my, that is my presentation, the rest is, is questions and comments, so.
Rich, before you start, Rich, I'd like to say that each council person has two questions, and then it rotates back to them, all right?
I don't want to use one of my questions, but I'm confused with the sand that you're moving to Ocean Isle, where is that coming from?
Great question. Oh, yeah, move. In this, in this photo, we see the, in South Jinks Creek, the, essentially the L-shaped dredge cut, if we, if I'll, I'll step away from them, from the podium and point out exactly where the sand is coming from.
So it's coming from, I'm just trying to get clarification, so it's, it's coming from South Jinks Creek. Does that mean the sandbar would have to be, I mean, there's, there's a, there's a bunch of issues that still have to be defined concerning South Jinks Creek.
Okay.
And there's a lot of velocity issues, too, that need to be defined, so that we can all understand it, that's right.
Thank you. Okay. John?
We're going to be able to do this multiple.
Absolutely.
All right, so, good. Just the first question on the terms you're using. You're talking about Jinks Creek, the governing depth in North Jinks Creek being minus two.
Yes.
What does that mean?
Minus two, minus two below mean low water, so it's, it's two feet below the low water line, yes.
I think I understand, but I'm, I don't understand it, but I'm sure.
I understand, and I should have, yes, I spoke very quickly over that, I apologize. It is two feet below the low water line, the average low water line.
What does it mean, like, so, so is that, is there water there in low tide, or do you, if you've got a two-foot draft on your boat?
You're going, you're going to bump at low tide.
At low tide, but what about other tides?
There's a five-foot tidal exchange, so at high tide, most vessels, the design vessel that we're looking at was a 30-foot Grady White, it was about, I think, recommendations were around, the, the national recommendations for clearance of, say, a center console fishing boat was minimum of five feet. That's safety recommendations. So you would be okay, you would meet the minimum safety recommendations by the American Society of Civil Engineers and PANIC, two organizations that sort of get into navigation regulations, but you would meet regulations at high tide, you would meet safety regulations at high tide, at low tide you would not, yes.
And that's about it?
Yes.
Okay. The, the, this is going to be very, it's very hard to get all the questions in a very organized manner that goes through here, but one of the, when you talk about North Jinks Creek, and you talk about the depths, and how much we would have to dig it out, for 25 years that I've been using boats in these waterways, has done nothing but add sand all the way through. And so, you know, nature has added and filled in, and so in, in a very simplistic approach, if we dredge it down to whatever levels are appropriate, we're still taking it back to where nature had it in the first place, which didn't hurt the fish, it didn't... where nature had it in the first place, which didn't hurt the fish, it didn't hurt the water velocity, it didn't hurt the navigational abilities out there. I mean, so, the question is, why restoring back to what nature had it in the first place, or somewhere closer to where it could be used to navigate? Why does that cause us any problems? Why not do it? I mean, why, why, why not dredge Jinx Creek?
There are, it is, it is not designated as a primary nursery area, it does not hold that state classification. However, the agencies do recognize, and, and I think most of the, the residents in Sunset Beach, recognize the environmental importance of that area as far as the shellfish and the, the marsh grasses on the side. The, now, so that the easy answer to that is, the, the resources have encroached into the area, or established themselves in that area, so it's similar to the marsh grasses of Turtles and Mary's Creek. As the marsh grasses, as the marsh grasses expand in Turtles and Mary's Creek, we are not allowed to dredge those grasses. We have to stay a minimum buffer away of 15 or 20 feet from those grasses, so as those grasses expand, we, our dredge footprint shrinks. We cannot move our footprint, we have to, we have to shrink it. And that goes back to, if, if the area is not maintained, if dredging does not continue on a somewhat periodic basis, then the resources will take over, and the dredging will not be, it will be more difficult. So, the, the answer is, the resources have established themselves in those areas. And, so, dredging could be done, we could obtain a permit, it would just be, it would be a longer process, and, to do so, so it's...
Robert, I have a question for you. In, in, in that discussion at the scoping meeting, we were discussed about mitigation. And the one gentleman said that probably won't be one of the largest mitigation projects ever in the history of North Carolina, removing all those oysters and having to put them someplace else, then maintain their structure for 10 years, at a huge cost to the taxpayers of Sunset Beach. So, did you ever come up with a final number on that mitigation cost to taxpayers?
I did not pursue that, in the thought that we would be avoiding it. We had, I mean, we talked with the UNCW Marine Sciences, and they did not, I guess they might have been very happy to hear my phone call, but they, they did not seem like it was a difficult task to, to accomplish, but I...
Well, this is my second scoping meeting, and this is your third.
Mm-hmm.
In your opinion, do you think that we're gonna be allowed to dredge Jinx Creek?
I think you need to prepare for a three or four more year process to dredge North Jinx Creek.
Would it be easier just to do south end, the feeder canals, the canals?
Oh, absolutely. The, the project that we have proposed here, it would be easier, if this meets the, I mean, I think, no matter whether this meets the intent or not, I recommend the town moving forward with this project to alleviate the immediate concern of navigation access, at least in and around the docks. Before more, I, I recommend moving forward with this regardless of what the next step may be, if there is a next step. This would be, this could be done this year.
As soon as November?
As soon as November, construction could start.
Ken?
Yes, first of all, I would like to say this, it's not a question. I support dredging the canals, the feeder canals, and the Bay Area. I support that, I think that should be done. I think that's, I think this is a great opportunity that we have a grant to help those affected property owners do that. But, I do have some questions. When you talk about selling the sand to Ocean Isle Beach, there is a state statute, 229-113H, that says that sand removed must come, must be placed on the downdrift beach. Ocean Isle is not the downdrift beach, and, and why would we sell sand to Ocean Isle Beach when we don't know what's gonna happen this summer with hurricanes? We might need that sand on Sunset Beach.
That is an option to place it on Ocean Isle Beach, as far as reaching that to, to, in this, in this instant, first, Ocean Isle Beach is the impacted beach. It is not the downdrift beach...
It's the downdrift beach. It is the downdrift beach.
Understood.
How do we get around there, Robert?
DCM would, would allow us to place material easier on Ocean Isle Beach, because they have a purpose and need versus some...
In violation of this state statute?
Yes.
In violation of this, are you sure?
Yes.
Who told you that?
By their comments, they would, they would rather see material placed on Ocean Isle Beach. I mean, I can't, I'm not gonna speak for the town, for the state, because they have switched numerous times on this project, but our conversations to date have been that we can easily identify a purpose and need on Ocean Isle Beach versus an accreting shoreline on shore, on Sunset Beach.
Are they aware of this state statute?
I assume so. But they are...
John, any more questions? You got another one, Jan?
Well, I only got two.
Two each, and then we go, you had Charlie or...
I don't have any questions at this time, but...
John, you have two more questions?
What about my questions?
You're gonna come next, buddy, going down the line.
He's already had one.
I've already done one.
You haven't had one? Okay, good, Rich.
Mayor, can I, can I clarify one thing? We would not, it would be illegal to sell sand to Ocean Isle Beach, but for them to co-share in the project, in other words, they would pay directly, or through a reimbursement process, we would not necessarily be selling sand, we could not sell sand. That is, that would be illegal, because it stayed on sand, it would not be the towns to sell, but if they co-shared in the project, that would be feasible, so we...
I think it's a bad idea to sell Sunset Beach's sand to anybody but Sunset Beach.
Where do you put it? Excuse me, I jumped...
I, I don't know, but we may need it someday.
My question is, you know, the cost is $40,000, $45,000, right? That's all we'd get out of selling it to Ocean Isle, if it's six or seven homes, at $4,000.
$4,000 a pop for six, yeah, $3,000, I think, is the current estimate for, because the volume's coming down, for five homes, you're looking at $15,000.
Okay, Rich?
Mr. Neal, I think the shoreline management project for North Jinx Creek should have been called Mission Impossible.
That's okay.
And I want to apologize to you for actions by a previous council. It took us a long time to learn it. Point of audit, mister.
Guys.
At the last meeting with the council, you mentioned that in order to dredge the feeder and finger canals, the town would, the town, according to a high-level state official, would be required to dredge North Jinx Creek, to resolve the recently discovered water issue, you know, water quality issue. However, the Corps of Engineers suggested that a simple variance, which you suggested, would only be necessary to eliminate the need to dredge Jinx Creek.
I'm not sure I'd say simple variance, but...
Variance. He didn't elaborate on any difficulty. And from what I heard, and maybe others have heard differently, it didn't seem like a complicated process, and he said that it would probably be approved. And they also suggested that if we proceed with this plan to dredge North Jinx Creek, that the permit will probably be denied, or difficult to obtain. Who's correct?
I'm not sure, as far as...
The Corps of Engineers?
The, they're both...
The, the state authority person who said that we had to dredge Jinx Creek in order to dredge the canals and the feeder canal? I mean, what are we getting? We're not getting any clear answers.
No, we're not.
Thank you. And the other question I have, this is my second question this round, Mr. Mayor, I was interested to hear what the NOAA representatives indicated. Now, he's been in Brunswick County, I guess, three decades. I think he's even older than I am. And he indicated that although it has never been designated as a PNA, with his long, vast experience, he believes that Jinx Creek is surrounded by PNAs, and it is a PNA. And the only reason that it wasn't determined as a PNA 50 years ago was because the state ran out of money when they were attempting to discover whether or not it was a PNA.
I don't think that was, no, it wasn't because they ran out of money, it was because they recognized it was a connecting water channel to, to Tubbs Inlet.
Well, he...
It was truncated.
It was truncated. So he, he mentioned that this tidal creek is like other similar tidal creeks throughout Brunswick County that are PNAs. And, the part that I'm worried about, I don't want us to get trapped in an EIS, which is gonna cost this town and these taxpayers millions of dollars. I don't care, $2 million. It's gonna cost them a lot of money. I'm finished with my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Charlie, you have any questions? You wanna answer that, Robert?
It wouldn't be too many, it wouldn't... You wanna answer that? Don York is our environmental specialist, but the, the, the price of the EIS, is that, is that a question?
Yeah, I'm, I'm told it's at least several million dollars, two, three million dollars.
To, to develop an EIS?
Environmental impact study.
No, I think it's very project-specific, as far as the cost would go. I mean, if we were...
Yeah.
If the town wanted to move forward with the path of pursuing dredging North Jinx Creek, which I got the sense from our April meeting that that was not the case, sure, that that permitting pathway would become more complicated, it may become in, an individual permit from the Corps of Engineers side, not necessarily a general permit. You know, right now, we're pursuing a major CAMA permit application with the Division of Coastal Management, that's the state side, and we're doing a general permit on the Corps side. So, I think when you heard National Fisheries, you know, indicate their, you know, they did not want to see North Jinx Creek dredged, basically the state and federal agencies, I mean, that, that is who they have authority over, so they need to listen to what they're saying. So it would be a very complicated...
Thank you.
John, I just have one quick question. Robert, to tell the people Sunset Beach, what do we need to do to pursue this with the option of not dredging Jinx, North Jinx Creek, but doing everything else we talked about today? What do you need from this council?
Agreement on, are we, are we able, are we willing to negotiate with the town of Sunset, town of Ocean Isle Beach for placement on their island, or do we want to find a spot on Sunset Beach for placement of that beach-compatible material?
Well, can't we go both ways to find out the results, if we can, you know, get the sand and keep it ourselves?
We can, there's no additional cost if we go to Ocean Isle Beach, there is additional cost to be placed on Sunset Beach.
You know, guys, do we all have a motion, so...
No, 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 we're still asking questions.
I was wondering if we can just get one thing at a time through?
We're still asking questions.
Okay, John?
My question is, is somewhat similar to what Mark's was, but it builds in that everything you say, have said, seems to indicate that, one, we should divide North Jinx Creek from the rest of the project, in terms of approaches. But you also indicate, and you also indicated that if we did do anything with North, North Jinx Creek, it would take a longer period of time. So, other than the additional time and perhaps additional expense, is there a reason why we can't find, follow a strategy now to do all the feeder canal areas and bays, and, and move that along, and then continue research into how to go after North Jinx Creek?
That is, that is what we'd recommend, or not necessarily North Jinx Creek, but defining that project purpose. We want to establish that navigation access, and, and what, for those properties on the east end, define what that access needs to be. And that, in my understanding, has, I'm not sure, we, we assumed a design vessel for that navigation access, and with that assumption came a design depth and footprint for dredge cut. So we, we recommend, I recommend, and then Moffett Nickel recommends, that we move forward with this project, either we, we put South Jinx Creek in it, or we don't. We, we show it on the plans here, is including the beach-compatible material, if we include that beach, if we include South Jinx Creek, we're gonna need a place on the beach to put the material, either Sunset or Ocean Isle, we will need that location. If we exclude that, then we're just doing the feeder canals and bay areas, and we can put the material, we need to resolve that, where we put that uncompatible material in the, in the core island. So, there is a project to move forward here with, we have included South Jinx Creek, the beach-compatible material, as an option, thinking that that would solve the immediate need around the docks, all the residents' docks.
So, Robert, real quick, so the people know, South Jinx Creek stops roughly at Riverside draw, Riverside Canal, and goes all the way to Palm Cove where the new piers are?
Approximately, yes, it stops before the new piers, but yes.
Stops before it? Okay. Charlie?
Yeah, hi. The last time you met with us, I asked about if North Jinx Creek could close up. And I, someone else said it would never close up, but I'm looking at Matt Inlet, which is completely closed. I'm looking at Tubbs Inlet, that is gonna be closed. My question was, if there's no exchange of fresh seawater, what happens to the oyster habitat?
And that, when I answered that question last time, I, I was specifically referring to South Jinx Creek. If, if the question was related to North Jinx Creek, I did answer it incorrectly, but this figure showing that, that, we don't actually show Tubbs Inlet, but I believe the, well, the complex, Tubbs Inlet Flood Shoal Complex is, is about, at, at low tide is maybe knee-deep or less, we walked across it quite, quite openly, and so that was the area I was talking about, would, would close without dredging. I think at Tubbs Inlet, you know, this, this area here, near the Tubbs Inlet label, is where we see that the, the water depth is around, you know, zero to minus two. But, so that was the area, I, I think, without any type of action, will eventually close, if not considered closed, no.
Rob, excuse me, which area?
This area.
Tubbs Inlet?
Well, Tubbs Inlet's about, this is about three-quarters of a mile from Tubbs Inlet, Tubbs Inlet's about here, but the, the Flood Shoal Complex, I'm calling it here, this area you can easily walk across at low tide.
There was something mentioned the last time you were here, that if we didn't dredge North Jinx Creek, somehow it would close.
And that, that question was answered, I specifically referenced South Jinx Creek in that answer.
Yeah, because I had a sidebar discussion with, I think it was Tyler Crumbly, because I'll be honest with you, I was too embarrassed to ask him in public. And I asked him the question, that there are some people who believe that if we don't dredge North Jinx Creek, that it'll close. And he indicated there was no scientific data to indicate that, and that it would be very, very highly unlikely.
So, then how did Matt Inlet close? There's no shellfish or...
Jetties, the jetties at Little River Inlet.
Tubbs Inlet, or Tubbs Inlet? How's that? What's gonna keep that from closing, and making us part of Ocean Isle?
I'm very curious about what happens at Tubbs Inlet. You know, that's, that's a fascinating project, we haven't studied it. I know the, as that channel becomes narrower, the depth becomes deeper, and, and a deeper, a, a narrow, deep channel, the velocities will flow a lot faster than a wide and shallow channel. The water depth plays a, a significant role in, in the velocities. But, I'm very interested in Tubbs Inlet, and watching that, and understanding that you can, you know, you can walk across it now, at low tide, at least, out into the ocean, you have to cross, walk across a little bit seaward of the actual inlet crossover, but I, I don't have an answer for that, because I don't know.
You might wanna, you might wanna put that map up.
Yeah.
So, as I understand the map, the Tubbs Inlet you're talking about is that part that goes right across the west end of Ocean Isle? Or are you talking about the part that's underneath the Woods Bay area?
This area is what, during our agency site meeting, we came out here and walked across and just, you know, freely at low tide. And we can go out there anytime at low tide to look and see how much shoaling has occurred and, you know, make our, you know, I'm looking at it and it's not, not too difficult to really see the issue there down the road, years down the road, start shoaling in there and definitely not taking a, I don't think, at low tide, I don't think kayak could be there, much less successful. But this is probably, I believe this is part of, this is the deepest section. We don't show that in the map, but this stretch here by this house is one of the deepest stretches within the entire Jinks Creek because it is so constricted, the tidal velocities are scouring through there. Narrow and deep instead of shallow and wide. And this property owner, he's got a sandbag.
And that, and that is something that, that inlets do. They wag back and forth. They move from one end to the other. They never stay in the same place. If you listen to the scientists, Tubbs Inlet is not going to close.
May I just point here? I think part of what we're concerned with, though, is just over the last five years, this area through here and part of this area down in here was fairly deep water at all tides. That's the area that's shoaling up, that's the area that's going to close. Now, there may still be water coming through it here during most of the year, but for our immediate concern in the town, this is the type, this is the area where it's really closing up and the ability to use it on a boat is going away. And I don't think anybody's arguing about this, but if this thing closes up, what you're going to do is get more waterways going up into the other area. And then going back to Charlie's first question, when, when that does happen, what does that do to the flow of the water going up through North Jinks Creek into our oyster bays and that area? So, yeah, it's a big picture there, it has to be done. And I'll go back to my first statement. Twenty-five years ago, all that stuff was clear and it worked real good, and you had lots of fish there. You don't have lots of fish anymore.
And twenty-five years before that, the inlet was moved.
With a lot of man-made help.
Yes.
Bob, can I ask you a question before I get overwhelmed? Put your practical hat on and put your Sunset Beach taxpayer hat on. Would your firm recommend to dredge North Jinks Creek?
That's why we would want to know from the property owners what they want, what the town wants.
This is not going to be your property owner decision. This is going to be a council decision. And I'm asking you, would your firm come to us and-
Whoa, 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 let's go. You'll have time to speak at the end of the meeting. Please hold a comment.
Would your firm-
It is to address-
What would your firm recommend? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but what would your firm recommend?
We are here to meet the purpose and need of the town. So if the town has a purpose and need to establish that deep water navigation access, you know, then we would find the best way to address that. My firm's going to recommend, you know, going to look at the purpose and need or the problem that the town has and look at the best way to address it. And we've been trying to do that, and we've gotten a lot of circumventing convoluted answers from the agencies in that process, but we would address, we would not recommend anything not knowing the problem from the town or client.
Dredging is forever. And to make a decision with all these questions and unknowns and the scientific warnings is a major concern for me. Now, there may be people in the audience who don't care about water velocity, erosion, and flooding.
Guys, next comment, person will be asked to leave.
I do.
Guys, I want to, I want to address the audience real quick. Majority of this council wants dredging. We just want to do it right. Robert, sit here, the three scoping meetings, we've been to, I've been to two of them, and every time I went there, the town, the state has changed their mind, said something totally different, told us we had to do something totally different. We have to know what we have to do, and we have Robert doing that for us. Don't you want us to do a good job? I am not going to mandate dredging to you. If you want dredging, you get it, but I'm going to do it the right way. That's all we're trying to do here. Go ahead, Robert.
May I?
Yes, Charlie.
Good, now I lost my train of thought. Oh, I, I looked at, from the shore, all these areas. A week and a half ago, Mark and I went out on the fireboat that draws, how much water, Richard? Two foot. And it was just before low tide, and we got stuck several times. And between the boat officer and Dustin Graham, we got out. If I was one of those property owners, I'd be pulling my hair out. And I think to not do this complete project is a travesty to them. And I, North Jinks is not a primary nursery area.
Go ahead, Jan.
It won't be, it, it won't be anything if it fills in.
Go ahead, Jan.
Mr. Neal, first of all, I would really like to thank you for all the work you've done on this. I know it's, I know it's been a long process and a lot of back and forth. There's a couple of things I would like to bring to the attention, especially of this community, that they may not know about Jinks Creek. Jinks Creek is a naturally occurring tidal creek. And the canals on Sunset Beach are the only canals on any barrier island in North Carolina that do not connect to the intercoastal waterway. Our canals connect to Jinks Creek. Jinks Creek is the connecting waters for our canals, not the intercoastal waterway. You look at Ocean Isle, you look at Oak Island, they're canals, you go across that bridge, you see the intercoastal waterway going right into their canals. We don't have that at Sunset Beach. We are a shallow water boating community. We always have been. And if you read the scientist's papers on Tubbs Inlet, you will find that Tubbs Inlet has always, always been a shallow inlet. So, you know, I just, I just wanted to let people know, we're not dealing with what has ever been deep water around here. It's never been deep water. It's always been shallow.
Any other questions?
Well, it brings up the basic question again, well, what is deep water? I mean, I have a, I had a boat fifteen footer that drafts eighteen inches, and, and I frequently got stuck out here.
I would suggest you, I would suggest you ask the scientist that, that wrote the paper that described Tubbs Inlet as a shallow inlet.
One of, one of my problems with the scientific reports that were there is that I didn't find, and I didn't read every page of them, but I read a whole bunch of them. I didn't find anything that sort of went through, my idea of science, is you take what the question is and you go after, you look at both sides. Those papers all went after a starting point of no dredging, and these are all the reasons that you don't do any dredging. There wasn't anything in there that went through and said, these are the reasons that you do dredging, what you get a benefit for the dredging. And among other things, while environment, yes, is important, there's a holistic approach that goes into, you know, this is our Sunset Beach coastal water community that has beaches and dunes and walkovers, but it has roads and golf courses and parks and all of those things. And when we moved down here, we had waters that we could take our boats out in. And, and there's, in my mind, a responsibility to maintain that. Excuse me for sort of giving my, my sense of a lecture there. What I hear you saying and what I am tending to support would be to carry through the decision that the council made in June of 2017 to, to submit the permits for dredging everything other than Jinks Creek. And, and get that process going and do that as fast as we can.
Count real quick, that was North Jinks Creek.
Everything but North Jinks, yeah, thank you, thanks for the clarification. Everything but North Jinks Creek. Answer the issues that come up, where we dispose of the sand as quick as we can and work through that process. And then, then we consider a longer term, what do we do and what do we address in terms of Jinks Creek? And I'm thinking of that, I would like to see Jinks Creek dredged. I think it needs to be done, but the, the practical reality is, is if we don't start moving now on the maintenance areas, then we'll be walking across our canals at all times soon. So, is that a good approach, or what, what do we need to do to make that approach go? Get the permission for O I B and then tell you to go ahead and submit the permits?
Yes.
We told you in June last year-
No, this is permission from O I B is all I need. Permission from, I mean, permission to negotiate with O I B. And if you agree with that recommendation of the call sharing agreement, then, then we're good.
Robert, one question I have, though, down the road, if we decide to give that sand to Sunset Beach, we do not have to live up to that agreement with Ocean Isle?
No, we can structure it that way.
Okay.
Just a couple of things. One, that's on the agenda, we put that on the agenda of Ag four for the construction. And secondly, Bob, I have all the-
Here's your mic.
And I'm looking at it. What is the revaluated, I mean, one point four trillion dollars for this project? How much do the taxpayers save by not dredging North Jinks Creek? Can you, you have two lines here, compatible sand, non-compatible. I just want to get a, because we're working, we're still working on the fiscal year budget.
Back to the phone.
The taxpayers would save approximately one-third of $222,000. So that is sixty, seventy, seventy thousand, seventy thousand dollars?
The taxpayers would save. Now, we already paid $100,000 for the oyster analysis. Is that included in that total?
No, this is construction only.
That's construction only?
Yes.
So the $100,000 that has been expended is, as Ronald Reagan says, once you spend the money, it's gone forever.
Went out with the last tide.
But, you know, saying that, Rich, I agree that, you know, with that, that cost analysis on the oysters, we would have never known the mitigation problem. We would have never known that there was that many oysters there, so it was a good thing that we did the oyster study.
Well, I just want to remind you when I voted against it.
I know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Charlie.
We're looking at all these scientific opinions, and these are experts in their field. And a lot of it I don't understand. But as a police officer, in a larger case, murder, rape, there was a lot of physical evidence. And the defense attorney, he would hire expert witnesses to say that this DNA is no good because of this or whatever. And the prosecution would hire lawyers to say, well, DNA is good. So it's, you know, you can, you can study from one direction or the other, and no one will ever agree, but you know, it's the same thing as global warming. There's some people will tell you, we're going to all be underwater in a few years, and there's others will tell you, it's really not happening, it's a natural occurrence. I, I don't know how we're supposed to make a decision. I guess we just balance the, what the experts say and try and figure it out.
Any other questions? Robert?
Thanks. So it's, I will proceed with Ocean Isle Beach and try and get on their council for June 12th.
Lisa, do I need to make a motion to that or no?
Yeah.
Right, I hear a motion to let them go forward to get the cost of sharing the sand with Ocean Isle Beach.
So moved.
But that's on the agenda.
No, this is not, that's, dredging Jinks Creek is on the agenda. Allowing Robert to pursue sending the sand to Ocean Isle to see if they could help with the cost, that's separate than Jinks Creek, Richard.
It's in violation of state statute that has to be addressed first.
What state statute? The one Jan mentioned?
Are you talking about the sand?
Yes, the sand in South Jinks Creek, not North Jinks Creek, South Jinks Creek.
Did you hear Ms. Harris?
I heard Ms. Harris, and he, Robert also said that he could probably get that through, correct, Robert?
Yes.
And if he cannot get it through, let's find out if we can do it or not, Rich.
Let's find out if we can get it through first.
Well, he's going to do that.
We have to, we have to submit, we have to get their authorization first to submit the permit and then get them to review it.
With, with, with the stipulation, if we can put it on Sunset Beach, we put it on Sunset Beach. That's our sand. We may need it someday.
That's, yeah.
Quite frankly, if Sunset Beach needs the sand, we're going to have to pay for it when we need it. And if we don't have it, we're going to have to buy it.
Robert, can you look, come back to us and say, what's the difference in cost and how much it would cost us to put it? There are two scenarios. Give it to Ocean Isle Beach, which is the thing that we're looking to do now, or worst-case scenario, give me the sand back to Sunset Beach.
Well, I don't think that should be worst-case scenario.
So if I understand correctly-
Sorry, Robert, just to get real clarification here. If we don't go ahead and proceed and try and get with Ocean Isle Beach, this will put the timetable back another month at least, which means no dredging this year on any project, right? We may not even make the variance timeline for the CRC.
Yes, what I would propose is I will move forward in both paths. I will try and, pending council approval, negotiate with, attend the, try and get on the Ocean Isle Beach Town Council's agenda for their 12th to present and ask that question if they will call share at that, at the equal rate as the Sunset Beach property owners. In addition to that, we'll bring back to the council, to Dustin and Harum, a cost proposal of what it would take to authorize, to gain authorization and placement, what we believe the cost would take to gain authorization to place material on Sunset Beach.
Yeah, the only thing that I would ask is that you don't raise their expectations too high.
Oh, I, there-
Because we may want to keep the sand ourselves.
There, yeah, the material, yeah, understood, understood.
But keep in mind, too, to keep the sand will involve further study, further time, and delay the application process. Just want to point that out.
And figure out where we're going to put it, right?
That's part of the, the study and everything, so.
Do I hear a motion to allow Robert go forward on the two scenarios that we've discussed?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Reluctantly, aye.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Robert.
It's not that painful, is it? Can we go home now? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes, April 2nd, April-
Mr. Mayor, I would like to file a motion to approve the minutes for April 2nd and April 19th, 2018.
Any discussions?
There are two sets of minutes for April 2nd.
Right, two.
One is for the special meeting and one is for the regular meeting.
Correct.
The two sets of, the two sets for April 2nd and the one for April 19th.
Second.
All in motion?
Aye.
Public comments? Please state your name. An address, please. An address, please. And we have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Diane Borman. I live on North Shore Drive. I find this whole presentation a little confusing. The scientific studies, if I understand correctly, is opinion. Now, there are people who have lived here for, what, 25 years or so, and I think they are probably the best people to speak in the behalf of what they're seeing, what's going on with the waterways. I've been here a year and a half, and I see such a big difference as far as boats getting stuck. I live right at the end of North Shore, and South Jinx is, looks totally dry at this point. They can't get their boats out. I think it's depreciation, it's decreasing the sales of our property. From what I'm told, that Ocean Isle, they're getting more of the rentals from Sunset because they can't get out. When people are looking to buy property here, they're asking me about the depth of the water, if boats can get out. And I really think it's, it's sad. I purchased the property, like I said, about two years ago. I've lived here a year and a half, and it really scares the hell out of me because I paid a lot of money for my property. And there are people, I feel like there's a power struggle here. I think everybody should have a right, a voice. We selected you to be our council, to represent all of us here, and I really don't feel that's being done here. And a lot of the people from who I spoke to are very upset. And I am extremely upset because I think our property values are going to go down the toilet. Here you're talking about all this money that's being spent. Well, guess what? Why don't you try selling your property? Your property could be a million dollars. What is it going to be worth if the waterways are dry? I mean, it doesn't, it's a no-brainer. You know, people up here are talking and they're, they're saying, well, what about this and what about that? Well, just come and take a look. Take a look. I mean, this Sunset Beach is beautiful. Didn't National Geographic say that it was, what, rated four or five? It's not going to be four or five. I don't think so. I mean, come on, open your eyes, guys. Open your eyes. Take a look. Yes, no? Take a look.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Brad Moke. We own property at 415 Marlin. And I just want to kick off. I've come to a few of these before and thank you guys for your service and thank everyone for coming. I live in Raleigh, but we've been coming down here for 25 years and owned property for 15 years. And it's interesting, as I was driving over tonight, and I kind of think of all the conflicting issues we've had over many years here, but it's still, I mean, I remember when the bridge issue came up. Oh, my God. And then the boat ramp, and then the park, and the causeway, and the lighting, and the landscaping, and the bathrooms at the public property and everything. And all great discussion, and I'm certainly not making light of both sides of the opinion.
Can you close this break? Mike, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I usually just talk so, and I like to talk to everybody. So anyway, my point being, I think a lot of this that we go through, I appreciate every week's service because you've just got to get to a point where you can, you can have the discussion and work through them. From what I heard, and correct me, I know a lot of people here, I imagine, are in support of the dredging. The waterways are bad. I think everybody realizes that. I think I heard the recommendation here is to hopefully move forward and open up the feeder canals in South Jinx Creek. I think that would be terrific. I think that'd be a terrific first step. Councilwoman Harris, I agree with you, this is not a deep-water coastal community. I think if any of us wanted deep water, we'd go out to Cape Lookout or some of those places. But I do think it is a water community. The boats are smaller, and so my, my opinion toward the Jinx Creek, if possible, I think we run the risk of dredging those areas back there and I'd be able to get my boat out of the canal, but I can't get anywhere then. I think the ability, Tubbs Inlet's a whole nother issue, but I do think the ability and time to be able to access the intercoastal waterway is what's important to everyone. And I think important, as they purchased the property and came down here. I think we all realize that the nature moves these things around a lot. But I do think, I think just the value of our community, you can get in property values and docs and all those types of things, but I think the value of the community that we all love and that we get national recognition for, that the lady in front of me just said, I think is important. So I know a lot of people want to talk, and I don't want to be redundant. So thank you for your support, I think, of the dredging project. I'd love to see us try to add North Jinx Creek at some point, just because, as you state, that is the access out there. I do think that's important for everyone, and hopefully we can move forward with the discussion. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Samuel Fletcher, Frank III, 4-8 North Shore.
You got to speak to the mic, please.
All right, I'm sorry. And I believe I can say that I've been here longer than everybody in this room, without a shadow of my doubt. That being said, could you bring that picture back up here?
What was your name again, please?
I'm Samuel Fletcher, Frank III. This is, I want to ask everybody on council, does anybody have a boat on the council? How many people got a boat?
Fletcher, you need to stay at the podium, okay?
I got to walk up here and show you something.
No, we need to stay at the podium. Robert, Robert will show it for you.
As you folks, as you folks saw a while ago, can tell you right, the last 12 to 15 years, that all that white sand is new. It's not old. That canal will fall, it will close up, it's closing up. There used to be good oysters there, there used to be good clams. It's not anymore. And let me tell you something else, some of you people I've already talked to before. Is anybody a past Girl Scout or Boy Scout in this room right here? If you're going to drink some water out of a ditch, do you want it moving or still? You want it moving. You got to dredge it to keep it moving. If you want to be an environmentalist and have the eagles, birds, and the fish come in, you've got to have the flowing water. If not, it will die. So that's the environmental part. The flooding part, not going to happen. I've been here again over 50 years, and it has yet to flood back there in the back. You might have killed some grass, but it won't flood. It will not happen. Mother Nature's not going to let that happen. It hasn't so far. What's your next one? Exactly. There is no other questions.
Fletcher, real quick, I was here during Hurricane Matthews, and I've been here 40 years, so you're not the only big guy around. But the bottom line is, Cove, Palm Cove was underwater under Matthews, so it did flood. I got the pictures.
Calabasas Bridge was under, in, you know, Hugo's still drive over.
You just made a statement that it won't flood. It has flooded.
Flood, it got water, it didn't flood, nothing washed away.
Riverside Drive, excuse me.
It didn't wash away.
Charlie, Riverside Drive was underwater.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So it was a brand-new causeway. So it was a brand-new causeway. There's a difference between flooding and washing away. It's not going. It's not going to go anywhere. Been here too long.
If I could add, the time that it was covered was about the two hours before the high tide and the two hours after the high tide that it was covered.
It was still covered.
Then it went down.
Are we not supposed to not have back and forth during public comment?
I followed the lead of the mayor pro temp.
All right. Fletcher, do you have?
That's all for now. See y'all next minute.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Tony Martin. I've got two properties on North Shore Drive, 1518, which I rent out, and 1524, which my wife and I live in almost full-time. In fact, we're making it our main residence this year, and plan to vote the next election. Don't know if that cares, matters to any of you or not, we'll see. What I wanted to say, first off, the 1518 rental is a, is a great rental. It's done really well. A lot of people bring boats. And the last couple of years, I've had a number of people say they're not coming anymore because they cannot get out when they want to get out. It's a big deal. And, you know, I'm losing money there. I mean, thankfully, some people have filled it in, but, you know, there's been people taking those weeks, but, you know, it's certainly being noticed. Secondly, I've been here for 12 years. When I first got here, Tubbs Inlet, the bay area was, always had water in it. I could water ski around it. My kids could do that, my friends. And now you can't. Last five years, I guess, that's kind of filled up pretty rapidly. The thing is, I understand concerns about water volumes and so on, but when it was all deep, there wasn't any flooding any worse then than there is now. So, in fact, if anything, I think the fact that the bay is shallower might mean that when there are storms, the storm surge, because the water is shallower, it's going to come up onto the land more likely with more volume than it would when the bay is deeper. That seems to make sense to me. But, so, and environmental thing, I don't know about you guys, but I've thought of shellfish, like the roaches of sea life, and they, they come back very quickly. I've got them all over my dock, all over my docks. I try and scrape them off. They get on the bottom of my boat. They come back. We dredge North Jinx. We might kill a few, but I guarantee you that they'll be back in much greater numbers once, once everything settles down. So, I don't know, that's my observation, feelings on that thing. Finally, my renters paid almost $5,000 in town accommodation taxes last year. So you can see I have a good rental. I'm talking about the town, not the, the whole 12 and three-quarter percent, just the 6%. And I've had many of them mention they enjoy the concert series, and that's one of the reasons they come. So just to thank, thank the organizers very much for that and encourage it to continue. It's definitely an attraction, and the town needs to support it. I don't understand why there would be a question about not supporting it anymore from the town's point of view, the council point of view. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Fitz Doug, and I have a house at 711 Canal Drive along with my wife, and we've been at Sunset Beach for probably 35, 37 years. And I've heard a lot of people talk now about the people that own property on the canal inlet, but I've not heard anything about people who own property elsewhere in the area, even permanent residents. And we're not one of the permanent residents. But when I look outside my house, and we're right there on the water in Tubbs Inlet, the people that use that inlet are not just tourists, they're not just renters, they're not just the homeowners or the people that own land there. They're people in Brunswick County and the surrounding counties. So I think you ought to consider that when you think about dredging and thinking about only for the property owners that are there, all the runners. Think about the people that use it for fishing and other recreational activities. We see them all the time. Jet skiers from Myrtle Beach, other people that I know, you know, are not property owners, but, you know, may be residents on Sunset Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's John Bell. This is the first time I've been to a council meeting. Been coming here over 35 years. Owned a house for the last six years. I really appreciate.
What's your address, John?
1525 North Shore. I really appreciate what I think is a consensus that we need to dredge. I think I've heard from each one of you in some part of the conversation this evening that we do need to dredge. And I think what I hear from the report is probably needs to be split into two parts. North Jinx and then the other sections. What I'm not clear on, and my fault for not studying it well enough, is I get North Jinx from the end, all the way in, but I don't know where the other part stops and starts. Can you quickly give me a clarification on the other part where it stops and starts? I think I heard you say it stops at Palm Cove.
I hate to be reiterative here, but I.
That's what this meeting's for.
And another quick question is regarding the sand disposal, I hear both sides. And I think the opportunity to make a decision whether we keep it or whether they participate in it, not sell it to them, they participate in it, is a great question. But my question is, we're still going to have to get rid of it either way we do it. Either save it or share it. Is this going to hold up, your question to OIB, is this going to hold the process up of a decision that's already there? If we do it, we have to dispose of it. I don't want to hold the process up figuring out whether it's shared or it's kept if the decision is to move ahead and get it dredged. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so two questions.
You made that decision to go ahead.
Have you?
Yes.
Okay. So will this process hold that up? I don't see the need for it to hold it up. I think we can get going on it and then figure out where to dispose of it.
Robert, can you really show them real quick, you know, about the?
Looking at, looking at this photo, anything not chomped in the dredge footprint would be difficult to include in the project. So this, this, the lines engraved up to Riverside Drive, anything beyond Riverside Drive would be difficult and to include. It would begin to impact.
So beyond Riverside Drive?
North.
North is not included?
Not included.
Okay. And then the other side, how far does it come around the L shape? Does it stop at the dock at Palm Cove or before the dock?
Before the dock at Palm Cove.
Before the dock at Palm Cove. So the opportunity where beyond Palm Cove, is that section a part of the North Jinx section, or do we now have three components that were considered?
John, you're out of time, so let Robert answer the question.
That, any portion closer to, any portion closer to Tubbs Inlet than, than the last dock in Sunset Beach, the jurisdictional limits of Sunset Beach would be, is not included in this permit. So only to the last dock in the jurisdictional limits of Sunset Beach, which I understand Palm Cove is not, would be separate permits. This permit, our permit would only cover, in South Jinx Creek would essentially cover from Riverside Drive to the last jurisdictional limits of Sunset Beach.
Thank you, Robert. Any other questions?
Wilson, Cheryl, 1112 Park Road. Let me make a couple clarifying comments, if I may, Mayor, regarding Fred's comments about the concerts. Number one, any gold sponsor has the right to have a tent on site. The only gold sponsors that will be selling products are our food vendors, no one else. But they have a right to have a tent and to advertise their company or their information. Secondly, in May of 1987, North Carolina General Assembly, Senate Bill 138, passed into law the accommodations tax criteria. It was done for Moore County, which is Pinehurst. All of those golf courses. It specifically states how accommodation taxes can be used, what they can be used for and they can't be used for. It's to be used for travel, tourism, advertising of the municipalities and the entities that are gathering accommodation taxes. And it's just like an escrow account for a real estate deal. You get that escrow money for that deal, you cannot put it in your operating general. It has to stay apart and can be used only for economic development, advertising of a municipality, tourism, and that sort of thing. So be careful how you do and how you move, think you can move accommodations, because it's not specified in North Carolina law by the General Assembly, and you don't want to break those laws. Thank you.
Thank you.
Teddy Walters, East Main Street, Sunset. Thank you, council, for seeming to move forward on the project to dredge the bay, the canals, and the South Jinx Creek area. That's a great step in the right direction. I would ask that a follow-up, if you're successful in getting that, for our citizens, that you immediately proceed with the application for North Jinx Creek. The rules are written, I think, based on common sense, that deep-water connection because of water quality. You know, obviously, if it chokes off and becomes a little finger lake, then you're not going to have that water flow. So asking for a variance for that, while advisable in this case, it goes against the common sense of, yes, it needs to connect to deep water and not stagnate. So the basis of the law, I think, is sound. Simply by saying that 2002 and 2010, we didn't have a problem with water quality because of flushing. You know, I've been boating here since the mid-'70s, like a couple of folks here. And if anybody's been on that water in 2002, 2010, 2018, you will clearly see that the water depths have changed significantly. So just because it wasn't stagnant or water quality issues in '02 and '10 doesn't mean that it's going to be the same today because I don't see how it can be. The Sunset Beach sand that we don't want to give away, if I look at the oceanfront and see how much sand is built up there and our dune line to see how tall they've gotten. The Sunset Beach sand that we don't want to give away, if I look at the oceanfront and see how much sand is built up there and our dune line to see how tall they've gotten, I look at the bay, how it's filled in, and the canals, and I go down the Madden Lake, how it's filled in, and the creeks behind North Shore, west, how they filled in. I'm not sure where Sunset Beach's sand came from because it sure wasn't here historically. So I don't, you know, it might be in our city limits, but that wasn't our sand. That was someone else's sand. It's settled here in some ways beneficial to us, some ways not so much. So I don't know why we're hyping on, or harping on possessing that sand. There seems to be a concern on taxpayer money here. Why don't the town, why doesn't the town just reach out and survey to the about 400 owners on the waterfront? Ask them would they financially support this? If the council does not view these navigable waters as valuable recreational areas for the citizens of the town, the state, the county, and all of our visitors from all over the United States to use, then ask the people who live on the water if they'll pay for it. See what they say. Reach out to them and then support their decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie.
It'd be quicker.
Council members, my fellow citizens, I'm Larry Booth. My wife Vicky have been coming to this beach, I guess, since our kids were, when we had one child at the time. He's the manager of Maverick's Point at this point. We have a house at 1703 Canal, and we also run the Maverick's Java. We support dredging the Finger Canals, the Feeder Canal, and the South and North Jinks Creek. So I'd appreciate it if you would vote in favor of doing the initial work as far as dredging South Jinks Creek and the Finger Canals. And after that, proceed with getting a permit to dredge North Jinks Creek. And I'm afraid if we don't do this, that it'll fill in eventually over time, just like Tubbs Inlet did. Because I can remember, we'd come here on vacation and we would have to walk across water to get to Burr Island. And that was a beautiful time, having that inlet there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry.
Good evening. My name's Tom Borman. I'm at 1515 North Shore Drive. Somewhat to reiterate what's been said here already. What I don't quite understand is the water quality issues that seem to have been brought up here. It makes perfect sense to me that if you've got a choke point that's at North Jinks Creek, if you think of a soda bottle, if it's got a small neck, if liquid can't come out of it, it slows down. So if we dredge just the lower, the south end, it seems to me we're still gonna have a problem if we don't do something about North Jinks Creek as well. The second point I'd like to make, that the gentleman over here made, is I think that the waterways are used by just about everyone around here. It's not just the people living on the waterways. So it's a consideration, I think, not just for the people on the waterway, but for the whole town, the county as well. I mean, I see people fishing around there all the time, and they're not just from around here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't argue with Ann.
It's almost ladies last. I have to say, I really appreciate the effort that goes into trying to figure out this whole dredging business because it's obviously very complex. And you keep asking the questions, and I think that's great. But I think, you know, not to make a pun for this, but it's time to fish or cut bait here, and we probably need to go ahead with the dredging. I do agree with what people are saying about North Jinks Creek. I love oysters as much as anybody. But if a few oysters have to give up their lives so that we can keep the waterway open, I think that might be important. I don't have a boat, so I don't have a dog in this fight. But I do know that the ability to boat around here and have navigable waterways is an important part of our economy. And if we have a situation that nobody can boat anymore, or that most people can't boat and get out to waters that are navigable, then that affects property values, not just the people who rent, but it affects the value of everyone's property, not just the people who live on the canals. I don't live on a canal, but it will eventually affect my property value. And if you live on the mainland, it's gonna eventually affect your property value. So it affects all of us, not just the people who have the boats and the canals. Second thing is, I just want to urge you to approve the money for the concert series. This is an amenity for the citizens of our town, but it's also a draw for the visitors. I don't really understand what I perceived as some antipathy toward local businesses. Island Breeze was singled out. But typically, sponsors at an event have an opportunity to have a booth to sell their merchandise. I hope that this council wants to support local business, but I just detected a little antipathy there, so I would like to raise that point. We do need to use the accommodations funds as they're intended, and this is something that promotes tourism. It promotes people coming to our beautiful town. And as a sidelight, we who live here and are lucky enough to be residents of Sunset Beach get to enjoy them too. So I really encourage you to approve the monies requested for the Sunset Beach concert. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Fogel, 427 Corvus Street. I was just wondering if there's a deadline for the funds for the dredging? That if there's a certain point in time that we're gonna lose that money, the grants?
We would need to, if I may, council. Each year, we would need to request an extension. At this point, there's not a threat of losing it. But as the time extends, that could change. The demand now, there's more money than, there's more money than there are projects. I expect that to change over time. So right now, I do not see an immediate deadline. We would just need to continue to request an extension.
And also, I was wondering if there's any way that the Bay Canal, if that can be dredged wider? I mean, it looks like they're only gonna go down to like an eight-foot width that they're gonna dredge in back in there.
Jeff, you're talking about the bank?
Yes.
Robert, can you address that question?
For the Bay Area, we tried to, it's constricting because of existing docks. We're trying to, we started off at approximately 80-foot-wide channel and tried to sort of find the middle ground, so to speak, as far as between the docks. We wanted to establish a navigation channel through there, but not dredge the whole thing. And then as we've, as we move forward back into the Bay Area, the docks restrict our width. And so we, instead of trying to, we want the dredge equipment to stay away from the docks because they tend to damage them a little bit. So we're staying away from that, and so that's where it constricts down to a minimal width. Could it be larger?
Because right now, at low tide, almost all the floats are in mud.
We do anticipate that...
Twice a day.
After this project, and the state anticipates as well, that the individual property owners would probably still need dredging permits under the current proposal to go from their dock to the channel. That there would be additional work for that or prop dredging or something. But it could be wider, but the current proposal, I mean, we could talk, we could discuss that with the town and, or see what the intent, what we want to do there.
Yeah, I would think that would definitely need to be widened, that hole from this corner where the big sand bar is out there. And with that sand, that mostly all came in since Matthew. And like John said, that's been deep water forever. And now you can, even at high tide, you can't go through there. Boats will get hung up. And I know of several boats back from the end of Jinks Creek South, going back to the intercoastal, boats have gotten hung up since Matthew. That water channel has changed. And pretty good-sized boats were sitting there with, stuck on a bar where that, the path they were on used to be deep channel. But it's now, even at high tide. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Joseph Santavica, 9109 Forest Drive, Sunset Beach. Got a couple items that I'd like to comment on. One is that in your discussions about the support for the concerts, you haven't discussed the tangential advantage to a whole lot of charities who are allowed to participate in the raffles at those concerts.
No?
The raffle's been...
Deleted.
It was done away with.
Been done away with.
Uh-huh, okay. Forget that comment.
The charities liked it.
What?
The charities liked it. The customers...
Yeah, they sure did. They sure did. Second thing is, you're gonna have a budget, a draft budget discussion in some fashion. And I'm wondering how the public, how we can possibly figure out whether or not the budget that you're going to present or the tax rate that you're gonna present is any good until we know what the new direction is going to be for this town? If we don't know what the direction is, how do we know that your budget is worth a shit?
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Point of order.
Point of order?
Yes.
Point of order.
Rich.
What's your order? I'm talking.
First of all...
You're swearing.
Rich! First of all, you're not talking about agenda item. Chief, keep me a favor. Please sit the gentleman down. Sit down, please. You don't need to curse at the die. All right. Go sit down.
I apologize. Accepted. Anyway, that's my comment, is that you all, you all need to tell us what the new direction is so that we can figure out whether this budget, draft budget that's on the agenda, is worth anything. Excuse me.
Any more questions? Any more comments?
Hi, my name is Stuart Maurer. I bought a piece of property on North Shore Drive four years ago. I've just since built the house and getting ready to move into it. I've heard a discussion here about a grant. I've heard the word "town." I've heard the word "resident." Who is going to pay for this? Are you only gonna make us on the canals pay for all of this? Or is the whole residents of Sunset Beach gonna pay for it? It seems to me that all the residents paid for the park, for the new boardwalks to the beach, the new sidewalks, paving. All of these other things are by all the residents of Sunset Beach. People come from all over to fish, and most of them come down the Feeder Canal and in all the Finger Canals to catch bait. That's where they come. They go up and down every day. And then they take the bait and they go fish outside Jinks Creek in the ICW. And if they can get around, all the way over to Ocean Isle by Tubbs Creek, that's a great spot to catch redfish. But it's not just all of us that use the canals. It's many, many, many people that come and use the canals. So my question is, who's paying for it?
Because we're having a discussion. Normally, we're not supposed to have back and forth with you. But the people who own the canals who are affected with dredging are gonna pay for it. 350 of them. It's roughly, I think Robert left, 3,000, 4,000 per family, but that's an estimate. Okay.
May I, that actually hasn't been decided by the council, but that's probably, yeah, you're saying it's going to be, likely to be, but that's... It has not been made a formal policy at this time yet.
It has gone.
Correct?
Yep.
It has not been defined.
That's it. Okay, so just the people on the beach pay for it. Most, not all dredging areas are paid by the people affected by the dredging, all throughout North Carolina. The town itself does not pay for the dredging, in any incident I found. I thought you said taxpayers on the canal, on the Feeder Canals. Any other comments? I'd like to put a motion that the discussion of town ministry reports, department reports go on record as...
Written.
Written.
So move. Fine.
You got a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Go to Old Business Board of Adjustment Meeting Appointment.
Mr. Mayor?
Whoa, whoa.
Okay, go ahead.
Good, Rich. Rich, just wait here, Mike.
Can we, can we break?
Okay. At this time, I'd like to take a five-minute recess.